To the October Work Session of the Washington Township Board of Education. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone not wishing to be seen on television may be excused. Please rise for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First order of business tonight is swearing in our new student member of the Board of Education, Gianna Caving. If you could go to the microphone, Megan will, from our law firm, will swear you in.
So, our first one, are you comfortable with this?
Yes.
Okay. So, I, Gianna Caving.
I, Gianna Caving.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the government of the United States and to this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I, Gianna Caving.
I, Gianna Caving.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of Member of the Board of Education.
For the office of Member of the Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
It's okay.
All right, we'll try it again. Am not disqualified.
Am not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to RS.
Pursuant to RS.
19.
19.
Colon 4-1.
Colon 4-1.
Am not disqualified due to conviction.
Am not disqualified due to conviction.
Of a crime or offense.
Of a crime or offense.
Listed in.
Listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
18A.
18A.
Colon.
Colon.
12-1.
12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, so you can join us up here. Mom and dad, if you want to take a picture of her in her seat with her tag, you can, now's the time. And I think after the meeting, we'll all take a picture with you, Gianna, for the website. Welcome. Okay, moving on to discussion items. First item, donation discussion.
So, we received an email. There is a company, AFC Urgent Care, and what they would like to do is that they would like to donate small care packages to each student that would include a snack, tissues, and hand sanitizer, along with a note from AFC, which would allow them to skip the line for our families if they ever had an issue going to urgent care. Now, I just wanted to bring this to your attention for a discussion. There hasn't, and if you need more time to discuss it, we can peel layers back. But in order to accept this kind of donation, it would have to be on a board agenda. But I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if you wanted to engage in this conversation, everybody's feelings on it, there would be a note that put out, that would be put out to everybody for AFC Urgent Care. So you would, you know, you would, we would be semi-promoting them by putting it out, but it would also benefit all of our kids. If they were in an accident, they would really go right to the front of the line for urgent care. So, just thoughts on the donation. I wouldn't ever make this call on my own. It's definitely something that you should weigh in on.
So, the little card sends them to the front of the line if there's a wait?
Yeah, they definitely skip the line. Yep.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I was just gonna search policy real quick to see. We had a policy on advertisement and donations, just because I think this is, while it's a donation, it's also an advertisement. And I feel like we could be opening the door for others to come in and say, oh, let me advertise for, fill in the blank, directly to our, directly to the kids.
Yep. Do you want me to refer back to business, so we can have that conversation? And then everybody can think of their thoughts, and we can bring it back to the board?
Also, just maybe a legal opinion on any potential ramifications of it as well. Thank you. Next is the homeschooling and equivalent education policy 9270. This is something Dr. Hibbs and I received a couple of emails about, so throw that over to you, I guess.
Sure. Okay, so, policy 9270 is the policy for homeschooling and equivalent educational and education outside of the schools. And number three is very clear in our current policy. Students have no right to attendance at any school function limited to enrolled students or participation in any extracurricular activities. So, the law is very clear that you can, you can design this policy. School boards has guidance on this, saying that you can allow students who are homeschooled to participate in extracurricular activities, or you could decide to not allow homeschooled students to do that. This specifically came from a sports request. So, I think I'll leave it right there, won't even name the sport, as to could a child who was homeschooled participate in sports? So, we not only have sports, but we have a host of extracurriculars. There are, there are some things to consider. For instance, if you wanted to consider opening it up to clubs and anything at any point met during the school day, it would be odd to have someone who's not a student at the school during the school day. But essentially, we want your thoughts on whether or not you'd like to entertain changing this policy, or thoughts on this policy to allow students to participate in sports that are homeschooled. Because currently, they definitely cannot.
I'd like to entertain that. Okay. I said I'd like to. I was answering this question.
Yeah, I mean, I think on this one, I mean, this would be residents who are paying taxes, right? So I think they're paying taxes, I think it, you know, they should have a right to use the tools that we have here. A couple of things would just be like, how do you determine eligibility? Because even our existing students have to maintain a certain grade point average, et cetera, to be eligible. So like, is there a way of determining academic eligibility for a homeschooled child? And then also, just safety, right? Like, like you said, having a random person come in to participate in a club throughout the day, like, they'd have to have some type of ID or something like that, so we could verify the identity of them. But I don't know if the eligibility one was one that would get me, because you could have a kid like, okay, I'm failing, I'm not gonna be able to play XYZ sport, I'll just go to homeschool this semester, so I can be eligible to play.
I have a difficulty with it, because that person who's homeschooled could take the spot of somebody who is attending school every day. So, it's kind of like a question in my mind, does that person who is not here in our schools, are they gonna take the spot of somebody else that is here in our school?
In theory, they definitely could.
Well, they're in the district, and they're still paying taxes, so.
So.
And they may have a legitimate reason.
That's true.
Well, I understand it could be a health reason why they're homeschooled, there are certain extenuating situations, but if you're just choosing to homeschool your child, I don't know. I'm not sure about that one.
So, there's still tryouts for these sports, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, if the kid who's homeschooled is better than the one who attends school every day, I mean, I think we should give him a fair shot, or her.
And we definitely would have rubrics and rankings for kids for all sports.
Are you looking for guidance, like whether or not this should be brought, as I don't think it's attached? So, do you want to bring it for a first reading on the 28th?
We certainly could. Would you like it to be for all extracurriculars? Or would you like it to be just for sports?
What are other districts?
I don't think you could do just, just sports, it'd have to be all.
Okay.
Do we, is that what we do for, like, GCIT kids, or aren't they just sports? I know I asked you this before.
I don't, I don't know of any, like, yeah, just sports, right? I don't think it's like a, I think they would have their own plays and things of that nature. So, I mean, it's randomly sports.
They should be for all.
You think it should be for all activities?
All extracurriculars.
Okay. Would you like me to bring that as a first read?
Yes.
Just a, just a quick question. Is there any additional cost that we would incur by having a child that's homeschooled participate? I mean, I guess it'd be miniscule, right? I mean, there's nothing like additional cost, we'd have to, I mean, uniform cost, that kind of stuff, they'd get that whether they're here or not. I'm just wondering, like, if there's aid we wouldn't be getting, because they're not here, or something like that, that would be impacting an additional cost to us for them to participate?
Additional cost, I mean, we're not, additional costs, I don't, I mean, if you keep X number of kids on a team, that would just be one of the kids we keep.
Wouldn't, would insurance already be covered?
Insurance would cover our kids, no matter what.
I did, I did make a note of that, just for myself, to see if there's anything we would need insurance-wise for them to be covered. So I can definitely find that out and report back.
Dr. Hibbs?
This.
Ms. Kuzempel, may I, may I offer something about that as well?
Yes.
So, from a residency standpoint and a registrar's standpoint, when a student is homeschooled, they disenroll from the district. So they're no longer a student here in the district. So what ends up happening then is, we would also have to probably have some discussion about how that's gonna look, because when a student is homeschooled, they only have to do academically equivalent work. It's not based on state standards. So, and then they, they are at the liberty to produce a transcript or not. So, as a school, when we disenroll people, we have no way of determining exactly the rigor of the courses they are taking. We, they have to maintain, if they want to return back to the school, 120 credits. But when they disenroll from the school, I have no way of checking on that unless we put something in place. And they could go to a different town, and I wouldn't know that if they disenroll from the school district.
And just one other point, is that if they're, they're not part of our residential enrollment, they're not reported to the state for ASSA purposes, so they're not included in our accounts of what our state aid is determined on. Again, we were talking about, there's no additional cost, but we're still, you know, transportation, uniforms, those costs are still in our budget.
Just to make sure I understand what you're saying, Mr. DiSilio, is you would have no way of knowing if somebody was still a resident or not, or?
No, that, that we would, we could ask for proof of residency.
We could ask for proof of residency, but if they moved, I wouldn't have no way of knowing if they moved or not.
So you might want to consider something in the policy, like an annual, or before each sport, that they have to reprove, prove, proof of residency, or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. So it sounds like you're gonna bring it for a first reading, which means it'll be in committee as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Onto federal IDEA concerns. This is something that, I emailed you all that letter today, that I wanted to send to Senator Booker advocating for our students to, regarding that funding. Dr. Hibbs got back to me and said, we don't really know how much we're gonna be cut, so we don't, we can't really talk about the financial, I guess, aspect of it. I did revise the letter. I don't have to read it right now, I wanted to, more hear from our administrators about it. But I revised it so that we are, so basically what happened is, I think 90% of the Department of Ed was cut. And along with that were all the individuals that have oversight of the IDEA, which is Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And they're talking about maybe it will move over into the Department of Health and Human Services, as opposed to the Department of Ed, which doesn't seem right to me. I mean, they're students before anything else. That's where it should be, in education. So since there's some talk that maybe we might lose that funding, which for us, I think would be a lot of money, I don't want to estimate how much, I'll leave that to you guys. But I think to be proactive, especially because of the state our budget is in, we should reach out to our US Congressman, or someone at that level, the federal level, and say, we're seeing what's happening, and this is financially devastating, and even more important, awful for students to lose that funding. So I just kind of wanted to hear from everybody about that, if you had an opportunity to look into it, and what you have to say, as for our discussion.
Just one point of clarification. So we called the Executive County PA today. There is, right now, no discussion that anyone knows of, of cutting funding. They have, they have cut people from federal, but there's been no discussion of funding being cut. And he hasn't had, had any conversations through his executive county reaches. Typically, what happens is that New Jersey floats the federal until the federal comes in. There's been no conversations of that being a worry yet. So, just to be clear, I don't think there's any conversation about cutting yet, or losing money in any way, shape, or form. It is massively concerning, I agree, that they're, they're just wiping out an entire department, which is just, seems to be what's happening these days.
Anyone else? All right, so basically, I'm just, I'm, I'll just read you what this revised, I can send it to you, but basically, I'm just, Dear Senator Booker, as President of the Washington Township Board of Education in Gloucester County, I'm writing to express deep concern about recent reports indicating Secretary McMahon has suggested transferring oversight from, I'll abbreviate, IDEA, from the Department of Education to the Department of Health and Human Services. Such a move would represent a fundamental shift in the federal commitment to students with disabilities. The IDEA is at its core an educational law, one that guarantees every child a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. Oversight by the Department of Education ensures that the law remains grounded in educational access and instructional equity. Moving IDEA oversight to Health and Human Services risks reframing disability as a health issue, rather than an educational right. Our district serves hundreds of students who rely on the protection services and funding provided under IDEA. I'd like an actual number there, if possible. The support we receive from the Office of Special Education Programs is essential for compliance training and coordination with state agencies. If this oversight were to shift away from the Department of Ed, I fear the continuity of those supports would be jeopardized. I urge you to oppose any legislative effort that would reassign IDEA oversight from the Department of Ed to Health and Human Services. Instead, Congress should reinforce the mission and capacity of Department of Education's Office of Special Education to ensure stability for students, families, and educators. So I can change the I's to we's. I mean, I'm speaking on behalf of the board here, and so I want to make sure everyone's okay with a letter like this, or if there's anything you want me to add, or if you don't want to do it at all.
I have no problem with you doing it.
Okay.
Why are you just doing Booker? Why wouldn't we do, like, both senators and the representatives?
Well, he's the US, like, there's only two US senators, so it's, so he's the one, what's that?
Him and Kim, right?
Yeah, so we could send it to both of them. It's just he's the one that represents this area?
I could do both.
Okay, I could send it to both.
I would say, if you got the letter, send it to the representatives, too.
Well, we, well, you know what? That's a good idea, to CC, like, the county people.
Yeah.
And stuff like, Eric said, you go to county first, so, just to put them on notice. I mean, these people, I've heard nothing from legislators about this, and yet I know everyone's really concerned, especially parents. Okay, thank you. That's all the discussion. And moving on to Mr. DiSilio and his report.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzempel. I have a couple of things to mention tonight. First and foremost, on Friday, we were relieved to get information from the state of New Jersey, that they have allowed the second pathway for graduation. For those in the audience and at home, who don't know what the second pathway is, we are mandated to have the students sit and hopefully pass the NJGPA, which is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. And that, the second pathway sunsetted with the class of 2025. All through the summer and up till last Friday, we didn't know if a second pathway was viable. All of our seniors who did not pass a test of graduation sat last week for a three-day test, and then that Friday, we were told that the second pathway has confirmed. So, for the educators present, that means nothing has changed from last year. The Accuplacer and other things, such as the SAT, ACT, are still in place. And I just wanted everybody to know that, and I wanted to thank the community for their patience as we try to navigate the mandates on that one. Couple of other things, a shout out to our Chief of Security, former Officer Hilbert. He, he secured with the help of Ms. Wetter and Dr. Hibbs, the Safe NJ app, which is an online robust reporting mechanism for anonymous reporting of violence. So, right now, the Parent Square went out recently about that, and it's a way for anonymous reporting, if there are any concerns of a legitimate magnitude that the principal would need to know. At this moment, Officer Hilbert is the primary, and I'm the secondary. So what I mean by that is, if there's an alert, Officer Hilbert will get it before me, and then if he's not able to answer that, he will pass it along to me. So that's how it's gonna do, and then we would filter that to the requisite principals as well. A couple of very cool Halloween announcements. The orchestra at the high school is a Halloween You've Been Booed fundraiser. It's $20 per bag. There's a QR code on Parent Square, where you can order by October 22nd, and it's a, it's to share with families, coworkers, and neighbors. Bags will contain an assortment of candy, glow items, and even non-candy items. And then I, another Halloween event, I'd like to make a shout out to our former Orchard Valley Panther, Kalen Davies, who was here presenting about his Eagle Scout Award on Saturday, October 25th. Orchard Valley Middle School will be, include a costume parade, DJ Jan's Party, haunted walkthrough, more safety and spooky fun. It's a trunk or treat, and the money is going to benefit a, catch, I just lost it, Perfect Angels, which is, which is, that's what it's gonna go to, which is something near and dear to Kalen's heart. So, wanted to give a shout out to him for his efforts, and hopefully he, that fundraiser is a success. So, Ms. Kuzempel, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. DiSilio. Old business, are there any, any items of old business?
I do.
You lead?
All right, so I have something to read, you may read it slow, so people can hear me. Unfortunately, I did not attend the last board meeting, as it was held on a Jewish holiday. I did, however, watch the meeting a few days afterwards. Mr. Tarashi, what happened to the ethical man I used to know? You blame Dr. Hibbs for the budget issue that we all know started years before he was hired. Have you ever heard of the ripple effect? Well, you started the ripple effect when you filed that unsubstantiated ethics violation. This resulted in the illegal document of necessity, which put Dr. Hibbs out on suspension, and resulted in a lawsuit, which would cost the district and taxpayers an unsubstantiated amount of money. Mr. Randy Ford filed the lawsuit, and per Judge Kelsey's ruling, that the doctrine was done illegally. We are now required by the judge's ruling to reimburse Mr. Ford for approximately $16,000 in legal costs. In addition, an ongoing conflict counsel was hired at a cost to the board and taxpayers. There were no findings of wrongdoing against Dr. Hibbs. All of this money could have been used for our student programs and middle school sports. Let me repeat that. This money could have been used for student programs and middle school sports. So, Mr. Tarashi, you are also to blame for the financial state we are in, as a result of that ripple effect.
Thank you.
Other items?
I got, it's not related to that. Do we, how many members are on the Town Council Committee? Three, right?
No, it's more.
No, I think he means from the board.
From the board. No, no, not members of council.
Oh, sorry.
I'm talking about the members of the board who liaise to Town Council.
I think it's three, let me look it up.
I have no idea.
Tell you right now, tell you right now.
All right, so, while she's looking that up, I understand that the County Teacher of the Year was recognized at a Town Council meeting?
Me?
Recently, right?
It's you and I and Scott.
Okay, so, I didn't really get any notification. So in the future, if we're doing anything that involves the school district, I would definitely appreciate notification, so I can attempt to be there. May not always be able to make it, but text message, email, phone call, that would be greatly appreciated, for the board members who liaise to Town Council.
I second that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have something. I had no idea that Eileen was gonna read something, but I have something that I want to read on my own. It's time for the truth to come out. So, I have devoted my entire educational career to serving the communities I have led with sincerity, accountability, and integrity. It is important for me to speak openly, to share facts, to tell the truth, and to do so with honesty and transparency. These values have always guided me as a leader, a husband, a father, and they continue to guide me to this day. On March 17th, 2025, a copy of the School Ethics Commission complaint was sent to Board President, Ms. Kuzempel. That complaint was initially submitted to the New Jersey School Ethics Commission by Mr. Jerry Tarashi and Mr. Robert Scardino. Mr. Scardino later withdrew his support, stating that he had been made to sign it under duress, and that he had been unable, quote, "to secure or be provided with the necessary documentation and evidence to move forward with this ethics complaint in good faith." No evidence. The complaint alleged that I used my position as superintendent to confer an impermissible benefit to the child of Board Member Carol Chilla by directing or approving changes to the student's math grades, and by influencing the student's acceptance into the National Honor Society. From the beginning, I stated clearly and consistently that these accusations were false and entirely inconsistent with both the facts and my character. On March 18th, 2025, I was placed on administrative leave with no rationale or explanation provided to me. None. One week later, on March 25th, 2025, the board hired Conflict Counsel to investigate the allegations. I was not interviewed until August 11th, nearly five months after being placed on administrative leave. Five months. During that time, I was given no meaningful opportunity to respond or to present information. This would never happen to anyone else in this district. On July 31st, 2025, Superior Court Judge Benjamin C. Telsey issued an order declaring that the Washington Township Board of Education violated the Open Public Meetings Act during its March 18th, 2025 meeting. As a result, the court voided both the actions taken that night and the resolution invoking the doctrine of necessity. Judge Telsey also denied the board's motion to dismiss the case, confirming the process used was unlawful. That ruling stands as a matter of public record and underscores the importance of following the law, process, and transparency of all actions. On September 8th, 2025, Judge Telsey ordered the Board of Education to pay $16,202.66 in attorney's fees and court costs under the Open Public Meetings Act. In his written opinion, Judge Telsey stated, quote, "The defense was so meritless that it rises to the level of being frivolous. The defense is without any reasonable basis in law or equity, and could not be supported by a good faith argument at all," end quote. This means taxpayers are now bearing the financial costs of actions that the court found unlawful. On October 3rd, 2025, the independent Conflict Counsel retained by the board, Attorney Christopher Supsy, completed his investigation into the allegations. His conclusion was clear, quote, "I have found no evidence of misconduct being committed by Dr. Eric Hibbs. My investigation is now closed." Mr. Supsy found no evidence supporting any of the claims. His clearance letter means exactly what it says. There was a complete lack of evidence substantiating the accusations that led to my five-month suspension. Based on the independent findings already on record, I remain supremely confident that the School Ethics Commission will also confirm that I acted appropriately and in full accordance with the law. Now, I was out of the room for executive session for a bit, and no one conveyed to me if they're gonna make the long form public. So, I'm gonna assume it's not gonna be made public.
No.
Okay. Because this investigation was funded- Because this investigation was funded...
So when you get done, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to just make the entire 340-page document public, and we can waive privilege. So I'm going to, so when you get finished. No, 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 wait, wait, let him finish.
No, no, you can do that now, and I won't read that far, for sure.
Okay. I'd like to put a motion on the floor to make Conflict Counsel, Christopher Subsy's finalized 340-page investigation made publicly available and to waive all privilege associated with the doc...
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, you go ahead.
No, just if we're going to make it public, there should be no redactions. That's all I'm regarding.
As long as you're okay with the fact that there's personal information about you and your child in there.
There's also a lot of personnel.
That should be redacted, in my opinion.
There should be no redactions because we, it's, I have no problem with it. If we have to get statements to have them signed, I have no problem with releasing it, but there should not be redactions. There's a lot of people that came to the podium that asked for transparency, and they wanted the full report. I have absolutely no problem with that happening. No redactions, release the entire thing.
I just want to add that we were told that the statements were taken under confidentiality, and so we would be violating that on the personnel that was interviewed, so it's kind of like...
All right. I'd like nothing more than to release that full document so everybody could see all the facts. However, I think we have to look at being responsible here because that document has a lot of confidential information in it involving kids, personnel, and other matters. The testimony that was gathered by the attorney, the attorney said, "This is going to be confidential. Don't worry, this isn't going to go out." So now we've solicited all that testimony under false pretense, and I don't think we need any more legal issues, right? We cannot afford any more legal issues. I am sure the release of that document will be followed up with lawsuits by peoples who are going to be named and everything else in there. The other thing is, it's going to have to be redacted. It's going to just, you know, look like a top-secret government document released where it's a big black marker over the whole thing, and you're going to see the date and page number at the bottom, probably. So, you know, I get where everybody's coming. This is an emotional thing, and, you know, I also think the public deserves to know what happened. I mean, my thought was to get that letter from the attorney that states what the charges were, what the allegations were, and that he found no evidence, and that would give closure to the matter. We'd be able to, the public would be able to see the official statement from the lawyer as to what he investigated, that he found no evidence, as well as his caution to us to not release it to the public and why. And I think that's the responsible thing to do. That's just, I'm just one vote.
Madam President, can I wait for a second, please? So, Scott, respectfully, if I just read for a second from the short version, because the non-release of the long version, what it's going to always do, it's going to give people the opportunity to make accusations about my character. And I hope everybody does this, because I hope you understand what this has done to me, my reputation, my family, my wife, my children. It's unreal, what this has done. And the non-release of it just allows people the opportunity to keep making unfounded accusations against me, like, for instance, what's going around now is that I was investigated criminally, and that Mr. Subsy's short form clears me of criminal behavior, but the long form has all of the juicy good stuff about what Dr. Hibbs did wrong. Now, this is what this says, and just so everybody understands it. "I have completed my investigation. I found no evidence of misconduct being committed by Dr. Eric Hibbs." The short form is an abbreviated version of the long form. So if it's so important that I had to be put out on a five-month administrative leave affecting my career for the rest of my life, the fair thing to do is to release this for people to see. Because otherwise, there's always going to be clouds of questions around what actually occurred. Now, we know there's no evidence.
Wait, Dr. Hibbs, have you seen the report?
I just wanted to weigh in and just explain very quickly that the report that was given was only given to certain members of the board. Dr. Hibbs has not seen it, just putting it out there. That's all I want to say.
No.
I also want to remind everyone, Dr. Hibbs is suing us, so be careful about things that you say. And also, I just want to kind of know what you're looking for reading this statement.
I think I've made myself crystal clear on that. I think that...
What was the purpose of it? Because we obviously can't respond to anything.
The purpose of it, ma'am?
Well, what was the purpose of reading that when it's public, what happened with the report, and we can't respond to you because you're suing us? So we can't even talk about it, defend ourselves, make any statements? We can't correct anything that you've said? We can't say anything?
Of course you could.
So it's putting us in a very bad position?
No, it's not. You had an absolute opportunity here as a board, and I gave it to you because, you know, and I had no idea what Mrs. Clancy was going to read here, and thank you very much for supporting me. You had an opportunity right there to say, you know what? The investigation came back, and there's nothing here. And you know what? We're going to help Dr. Hibbs clear his name because he's our employee, and that got breezed over within 15 seconds.
I haven't seen the report, and neither did Mrs. Blom, but maybe the people that saw it? I don't know why they didn't speak up. That would be Carol, Ralph, Steve, Elaine.
I'm happy to speak up.
Like, I don't, so if they didn't say anything, like, we haven't seen it. I would love to see it. All I've heard is about it, so I'd love to see it. I know Mrs. Blom would love to see it, but I have a concern, I know Steve does too, for the employees.
Yeah, so my biggest concern, I have no problem with, I have no problem with the report being released. There's a few things. One is the employee, the names of the employees who got interviewed. You know, I don't want them to be retaliated against, number one. Number two, there's medical information from, for Carol's daughter, who is a grown person, and that would be a HIPAA violation if that information were to be out there without her daughter's consent. So there are things that, and this is a question for you, it's why I'm looking at you, Megan. Even if we waive privilege on the document, there are still laws protecting those specific items. Personnel have to be, has to be blacked out, HIPAA, sorry, medical records have to be blacked out, et cetera. But the crux of the report and what the public is looking for will be released to them, correct?
We would have to go through the report and see what is privileged and what can be, if the report wants, if everybody wants the report to go out, we'd have to go through it and then make those determinations.
Even if we waive privilege. So if we waive privilege, it's not...
Well, it depends on what you're waiving. Like, are you waiving? Because I know Ms. Chilla would like to waive the entire thing and just say, "It doesn't matter, everything goes out."
Okay, so I'd like to amend my motion to make the report public, the contents of the interviews that were done, but I'd like to protect the anonymity, did I say that correctly? The anonymity of the employees. I'd like their names to be blacked out, out of respect for those employees. I'd like the medical records of Carol Chilla's daughter to be blacked out, and anything that has political or legal ramifications that could hit us down the road. But what I would like is enough content to be in there to where the public can, you know, decipher on their own. I think that that's, I think that's fair. I mean, I amended that motion. So that was a long motion.
Why don't we do this? Is there a way, and tell us what we need to say, for at least just the full board to look at it at first? And then maybe on the 28th vote? I mean, I, I have no, I don't care who sees it, but I haven't seen it. So I would like to see it.
I mean, at least the motion for the entire board to see the full report, including those who have...
How do you do that when they're conflicted and then not include me?
So majority of the board?
She's saying that, she's saying that how could we all see it, including you?
So, would that jeopardize privilege?
I mean, if we're opening up to non-conflicted members, or to conflicted members, couldn't that potentially jeopardize privilege on the document?
It can jeopardize, I mean, the reason why it wasn't sent to certain people was because there are things that need to be protected, and this whole entire discussion is jeopardizing a lot of different things. And we may, or may not know what is going to happen until it actually happens, is the answer.
So Julie, I agree with Dr. Hibbs. I think there's going to be questions unless the public's allowed to say it. So I'm for releasing it.
So...
Okay, let's call the question.
Hold on, hold on. Can I say something before we get to that call the question thing? So, Dr. Hibbs, I think, you know, I support you in every way I possibly can, and I'm sorry that you had to go through all of it, and, you know, and your family. You know, I do have concerns about releasing the report, which I'd stated. The reason I didn't say anything about it is because we had the Conflict Counsel here earlier, and we talked to him about what we can say. Actually, asked him to prepare something about what we could publicly say without jeopardizing privilege on the whole document. So, you know, that, I might suggest that maybe we do that because that letter would say mostly what you said, you know, about clearing you of any wrongdoing, et cetera. But it also puts his cautionary language of why we should be hesitant to release the whole rest of the report. And, you know, I think, hopefully, that should be enough to have people not question your integrity or anything else with it. But it's just such a massive document. I mean, the other thing to consider is if we did what you suggested, Steve, you know, and redacted all that stuff, we're going to have to pay the attorneys to do that. It's a 300-plus-page document. That's not going to, you know, it's not going to be a lot of money, but it's going to be money that is just more money after, that we don't have.
Julie, the motion is to send it out.
I amended the motion to, and tell me if I'm toeing legal lines here, you know, keep me honest, Megan, but names, titles, and medical information, I'd like redacted, but the rest of the meat potatoes of the 340-page report, I'd like the public to be able to view it. That is my motion. So how do I say that legally without the colloquialism?
Just the way you said it.
So, we're still in discussion portion, I believe? I'll just say this. If you redact all that, it doesn't tell the story. It just doesn't. I mean, we know who we're talking about, right? It's, in fairness, it does not tell the complete story. It tells a part of it. It just does. As much as you want to protect everyone, I understand. And it is, you know, as the conflict attorney stated, you know, when people were interviewed, they were told that it would be confidential. I think that was the concern. But all of the redacting doesn't tell the story. So if we're going to make a move and say, "We're going to release it," then release it. To go halfway, I'm going to vote no, because I don't think we should go halfway. I think we should tell the complete story, or don't tell the story. So that's going to be my vote. It's, if we're not going to tell the whole story, I'm not, I'm not going to vote for half of it.
I don't even know that I can be involved with this, but could you get something legally from the people who are in the report that they signed to say they release?
Yeah, that's my problem.
I don't, I can't really...
I mean, because that's my issue, because, and another thing is like, for a teacher, for teachers or whoever came forward to come forward and make these accusations, it's like, takes an immense amount of, I mean, they must have been really upset to do that, right? Because you wouldn't normally do that in your place of business. You wouldn't normally do that in your place of business. So that's one thing.
I just want to add something. You said accusations. You don't know that everybody was an accusation. There might have been people that said the opposite. So you're assuming it's accusations.
Well, I'm talking about the, all we received, all we received was this ethics complaint. And I'm talking about what that alleges, and what that alleges is a very...
Correct, and it has no evidence attached.
Let me just finish. What is let, I know, but there was just a speech about how much money's been wasted and so on and so forth, but changing grades and academic class rank is a very, very serious issue. Let me finish in a school, in a school, okay? You have to have academic integrity and integrity in the programs. And so I know people think like, and I've heard people get up and say, "What's the big deal? It's a grade change." That is a big, that is a big deal.
It's an enormous deal.
We weren't like, we weren't out of place to ask that that's investigated. I really just want to clarify that. That was our obligation, was to investigate that.
I don't think anything, anybody's questioning an obligation. If it was the board's desire to investigate it, that's exactly what the board did. It's now concluded.
Yeah.
And now, the board needs to accept the findings, period.
And no evidence of misconduct.
That's it.
So let me be very clear. I did not change a grade, and everything we did for NHS was warranted. We did so many things wrong incorrectly as a district with National Honor Society, and I think that story needs to be told. I really do. And honestly, if anybody would have asked me any questions about any of this, I would have been happy to give this answer publicly, and I actually did. Go back and look at the August meeting of 2023?
Yes.
2023. Go back and please watch that. And you're going to see, I talked publicly about all of the failures we had with NHS that we rectified, and the 47 students that were missed that year, not in changing the criteria for the following year, in changing, in looking at what we did wrong that year. So with all due respect, I just feel like my reputation has been absolutely maligned here, and there needs to be, there needs to be fairness, and fairness.
If I could just add real quickly, I wasn't investigated in this. I was interviewed, and I said it last meeting. I'm going to say it again. My reputation was completely destroyed in the community, and my child was smeared, and has long-lasting effects from that. That's just the fact, period. The teachers and the staff, some of them, that she thought that there was a great relationship and there were no issues, was not necessarily the case. So, you know, I'm reading a lot about, and I'm listening to some people's comments about being kind and what we could do differently as a board and all of that. And I totally agree with it. But I want anyone, I'll challenge anyone, that as a parent, please endure what I've been through in the past year and being falsely accused with no evidence. I said to this board on March 18th, "You're going to be grossly disappointed when this all comes out. You're going to be grossly disappointed." That's it. There was no evidence. And I'm going to say this, what I had to go through, my child had to go through, and we're going to be kind? I'm not going to be real kind. I've been quiet, I've been professional, because I'm not going to do anything differently than that. I'm not going to sit up here and be unprofessional. But I will tell you that this report and what was in there and all of the evidence, or lack thereof, is there. And to say that we don't want to release the way we have, I understand there might be legalities. I'm going to keep saying it. I have no problem with the entire community seeing what happened here. And so, no, I'm sorry I can't be kind and infighting and all of it. I feel awful because it does have an effect on students. It does. I don't think we've been as productive as we should have been this past year as a board. And it's unfortunate because the students are affected because of all this. It's a huge distraction. I didn't create it, and I'm going to tell you, I would not have created it. I had no desire to be a part of any of this. The things that were said about me in this community is untenable. I can't even believe that some of the things were said. It's outrageous, actually. So with five meetings left to go, and I think, you know, I'm sorry I'm rambling, but this has been incredibly emotional. And what I've had to endure as a parent, I never thought that I would ever have to. I've given back to the community. I've been on PTOs through elementary school. I've done a lot because I really do love the community, and I think the kids deserve all of our energy and our time, as much as we can give it. There's book, almost every book fair, I think, I've been a part of. Really, honestly, everything that I could possibly do, I did with a whole heart. And I ran again to sit up here with a whole heart to really help. I have no political motivation at all, none, no aspiration at all. So I'm sorry if we're now all taking the time to listen to this, but quite honestly, I think I'm due a moment to be able to speak from my heart to say, yes, I would like everything released because I would like my reputation cleared and my child, who was so undeserving of this attack that happened. I would like her name cleared, because still to this day, she suffers devastating effects from this. I will tell you that.
So I just want to be clear. My amended motion is to release the document to the public for a report, 340 pages, and redact names, titles, and medical information, out of respect for those employees who had the courage to come forward.
Who can even vote on this? I guess.
Everyone can vote on it.
Everyone can vote on this? Even the conflicted members?
I don't know if the conflicted members can't vote on it.
Can you advise us on that?
Yeah, the conflicted members shouldn't be able to vote on it, because you're conflicted. It's your report you haven't seen.
Okay. So, that's me and Pat. So, Pat and I can, okay.
Roll call.
So, you're conflicted, right? Oh, she'll just, yeah.
Mrs. Bloom?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy?
We're talking about Steve's new motion, correct? Yes.
Bless you.
Ms. Chilla?
Sorry. No, because I don't want any redactions.
Mr. La Liberty?
No, for the reasons that I stated.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, but I would want the whole thing released, but I would be yes on this motion.
Oh, Mrs. Baker, she's absent. Ms. Kuzempel?
Abstain.
I want, I want to be clear.
Three, three yes, two no's, and two abstain.
Motion carries.
Simple majority?
Yeah, motion carries.
Wait, I want.
Yeah, you only know.
Megan?
I think it's a simple majority.
Simple majority vote?
Yeah.
Okay. If it's simple majority, the motion carries.
We need to know. Okay. Um, I, I wasn't gonna bring this up, but since we're doing this, I'm going to. I, I have a statement that I want to read before we move forward. I want to take a minute to address a letter we received from the Bush Law Group on Friday. Over the last few years, this board has faced challenges that have tested the patience, professionalism, and purpose of every single one of us. Too often, the focus has drifted away from where it belongs, on our schools, and instead has been pulled towards social media chatter and board member infractions. The letter from Bush Law should be taken seriously. It is a reflection of the culture that has taken hold here, a culture that has made it harder for anyone, including our own council, to do their job.
Can I pause it for a second?
No. Every one of us is up here as a volunteer. None of us get paid for the long hours, the meetings, or the criticism that comes with this work. We do it because we care deeply about the district and the children who depend on us. This is our opportunity to reset. We can do better, and we must, because the work of public education is far too important to be overshadowed by ego.
Julie, is this what you wrote, or is this what Bush Law Firm wrote?
I wrote it, but.
And they, this is based on the letter that they sent to us, right?
Yeah.
Why, why can't we read that letter?
I thought you were reading the letter.
We can read the letter.
You can, you have to. Okay, so, first of all, for the first motion that was for the report, it was a simple majority, so it did pass. And then, secondly, in terms of the letter from the Bush Law Group, it would have to be, you would have to waive privilege.
Privilege on the letter?
Yes, because it's attorney-client privilege. So, if you would like to read it, you can waive the privilege.
It's just a resignation letter, right?
Yes, but it is still attorney-client privilege.
Okay, so, I like, I, I mean, I, I want to release that to the public as well. Might as well run a streak here. I, I'd like to make a motion to release Bush Law Firm's resignation letter that Julie was referring to in her statement to the general public.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. There's some things in there personnel-related. I think that would be considered personnel-related. I'd like to get our solicitor's opinion on whether that would need to be redacted or not.
He was Rice then. And he, Dr. Hibbs was Rice, and he wants to bring any conversations about him to, any conversations about him to public.
That is accurate. I compelled my Rice notice to public. Yes. So, if, if this goes this way, it's not a problem, but just, I'm gonna speak my truth again, and that's gonna, that's gonna be a whole lot of truth for everybody.
Roll call.
Sorry, sorry for, sorry, part of discussion?
Discussion. Real quick.
We were in discussion.
Okay, then I'll just say it before I vote. I mean, fine.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
No, I think it has legal ramifications, so no.
Mr. La Liberty?
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes. Motion carried. Order three.
Wait. Give me five.
No.
Simple majority.
Simple majority.
Just like the, yeah. From reading the, reading the letter?
For reading the resignation?
Yeah.
No, okay, go ahead.
So, are you gonna read it?
I'm gonna read it, okay. Here, I'll read this here.
Says, Dear Board President Kuzempel, since our appointment as board attorney in 2022, the Bush Law Group has been proud to serve the Washington Township Board of Education. Our objective has always been to provide clear, efficient, and high-quality legal counsel to help the board fulfill its responsibilities, even when its members hold divergent views. Unfortunately, it has become increasingly difficult to fulfill that mission. Our legal advice, which is intended to protect and guide the board, has been repeatedly mischaracterized or used by some members and even the superintendent of schools in ways that unfairly malign our firm's reputation and, more importantly, undermine our ability to advise the board as a whole. This is not merely an undesirable circumstance. It is untenable and not in the board's best interests. After careful consideration, our partners have determined that we can no longer effectively represent the board. Accordingly, we hereby resign as board counsel effective upon a mutually practicable date, but no later than the expiration of our current agreement, which is June 30th, 2026. The Bush Law Group values longstanding relationships built on mutual trust and respect. Those qualities have eroded within the board itself with a noticeable decline in civility, trust, and respect among its members. These conditions make it especially challenging to guide an organizational client whose decisions must be collective, not factional. Despite our decision, we remain committed to a smooth transition. We will assist the board in identifying and retaining new counsel and are prepared to continue serving as board counsel through June 30th, 2026, at the latest to ensure continuity. You can count on our full cooperation as the board moves forward. Thank you for the opportunity to have served the Washington Township Board of Education. We hope the board members might consider using this transition as an opportunity to reestablish the mutual trust, respect, and civility that are indispensable to its work on behalf of the students and taxpayers in Washington Township. R E S, R E D Schneider Esquire, Senior Partner. So, because of that, we are putting our legal services out to RFP.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually have to speak to a lawyer about, about that piece. And I'm not gonna read the, the email that I sent to the full board, because I don't think that's, this is the right time for that. But the, the line in here that's, that Ms. Kuzempel just read, "Our legal advice, which is intended to protect and guide the board, has been repeatedly mischaracterized and/or used by some members and even the superintendent of schools in ways that unfairly malign our firm's reputation and, more importantly, undermine our ability to advise the board as a whole," I completely disagree with. And anyone who's been here, pay attention to what has happened at this Board of Education. Violations of the Open Public Meetings Act, doctrine of necessity, conflicts that weren't really conflicts. So, I'm not gonna go into detail until I have a firm grasp of what I should say publicly, but I will say quantifiably that that accusation by Mr. Schneider is, is not only harmful to my reputation, but is categorically false. And there were plenty of people, there are plenty of people on this dais that will attest to that. Shameful.
Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have one card, Raymond Woz.
So, as on my card, I have stated that with the government shutdown, with our IDEA federal challenges, so that literally all took place on Friday, this past Friday, which caused a lot of problems, not in the Department of Ed, but within the unit of special education. And as someone who received those services as a student here and everything else in the IDEA, there's gonna be a lot of problematic things, because it's not just gonna become a federal and government issue, it's just gonna become a state issue. And then now, it's gonna reflect as a local issue, meaning you guys are gonna have a lot more to bear within this issue. So, I know, and I appreciate seeing and hearing that you guys are gonna do letters. Definitely send it to both senators of our state, because this is a real issue. It's going to affect not just our state, but it's affecting 7.5 million disabled children across our nation. And with a lot of the funding and stuff like that, it's about approximately like $15 billion in the nation for our students. And basically, it's a swiping rights, taking away rights from disabled children, disabled students in our nation, and it's quite frankly disgusting to think, number-wise and logistics in thinking of it and stuff. And I do appreciate the letter. This letter should be going all over, should be going to other boards, like trying to get support and ramp up this stuff to the state to do something, to fight back against this, these issues of our government shutdown that we're having, and having all these people being let go. Like, that doesn't make any sense, because now, since that's gonna be an issue, our Civil Rights Office in the Department of Education on a national level, like legit, about maybe 70% of those cases are being dropped because they don't have enough people to retain and gain those access to continue these reports. And watch out for certain things that are violated, not just on, from the state, but also our, our board and everything else, and our school district being violated in certain aspects, but just using us as an example, because they try to nitpick everywhere across our nation, and it's quite scary. And I think we should be a staunch advocate for these changes and doing those things, because I recently got elected, not elected, but more appointed to a position, into a caucus for disability right advocacy and stuff within our state through some, some of the things. And this is a problem. Like, this, I know this happened Friday, but we gotta be proactive. We can't just sit here and wish for promises and things like that. Are you gonna have teachers get involved? How are you gonna promote it? How are we gonna make change on the state level and on a national level stage to be able to be proactive with this? And not just sit here and just like, oh, we're just gonna mope, we're not gonna do this. Like, be changemakers. We need changemakers from this board, through our administrators, through our teachers. Like, we need things, and we need you guys. Like, this is a time now for advocacy to strive and thrive within our board, to bust people, to bring people, to actually talk to people in Congress, talking to people in our state Congress and things like that. This is an important issue. And besides that, it's just, that's an ongoing issue, the Civil Rights Office and having that being closed down on that branch from the Department of Ed. But also, Section 504 is being challenged in like 17 different states, too, on top of this. So, not just like as an adult, my rights are being challenged through Section 504, it's even our students and our schools that might hypothetically might lose their rights because of these lawsuits on a national and federal level. We need you guys to do more to help disabled folks, because we are going to lose so many rights. And I don't want to lose my rights as a disabled person in this country to get educated and not have rights when I go to Ingate New University in other ways, but our, our current students who are in public ed, who really, really need this stuff. And I highly encourage you guys to take a bigger action and take a plan, take, have something for us to help with, or how we can do things. Like, please, I'm begging, please do something before it's too late and children lose their education and not have an appropriate education in our school system here. So, please, be part of that change.
Thank you, Raymond. Raymond, I did want to mention, too, we, we're gonna send the letter, but each county has a president, a New Jersey School Board's president, vice president, and then what's called vice president of legislative relations. And the woman that, her name is Jessica, that's up in Morris County, she's a VP of Legislative Relations, and she has created like a network among all of them where, and done a ton of work to find out like what are the important issues in each counties and thing like, things like that. So, I'm gonna send her the letter, too, to just share out with everybody in that affinity group, so that they at least get lobbied by New Jersey School Boards Association, you know, at that level. But I'm sure other organizations. I'm sure. Okay.
Wait a second.
Sure.
Raymond, just so you know, they, what they're doing across, across the nation, I don't agree with, and I imagine a lot of people don't agree with at all. Right now, it is unclear what it all means, if that makes sense. But right now, we are, we are not losing services. Washington Township is not gonna look any different tomorrow than what we looked like last Wednesday. So, we will, if, if they do eventually cut money, which they have not, we will advocate strongly. If they, if they cut resources, we will advocate strongly. But as of right now, I just want to make sure that you understand, no problem. You know, we, we believe in the rights of all kids, you know, we support all of our children. But right now, it's kinda unclear as to what it all means. So, we have to let the dust settle and figure out what it means. And we have leadership here at the county. We have an executive county superintendent, we have an executive county business administrator. I spoke to the executive county business administrator today, and there's been zero talk of having this affect us financially, that he's aware of. And they go all the way up the state, and they meet with the governor, okay?
So, we still have our 25, 26 allocations. We're still going through the approval process. We're still able to, once we start spending, draw down the funds. So, we haven't heard anything affecting our 25, 26 money.
Thanks, Janine. Nicole Lanuti?
Okay, I have three very random things. In regards to everything that happened on Friday, I know right now, there's been no talk of any type of resources or funding being cut. But Julie saying being proactive and sending this letter, I would really hope that everyone gets on board with being proactive, because we have seen with our regular budget and the state funding that we've lost and without being proactive and without planning where it's put us. I know I could speak for many, many, many parents that what happened on Friday was pretty devastating, especially not knowing what it means and where it's gonna go. It's not political. I mean, it's just human decency that what happened is not, is not right. So, I really hope that our district is going to get together to make a plan for what happens in 2026 or 2027, or we don't know what's gonna happen with this. So, if it does trickle down to meaning that resources and funding is gonna be cut, I hope there's a plan in place if that just in case does happen, even though there's no talk of it yet, and it might not ever happen. Just having a plan in case that happens would be a great thing to know that our district has. Number two, when we were talking about the sports, if you did open it up to homeschool, does that mean you have to open it up to charter or Catholic school? If they're disenrolled in our district from homeschool, I guess it doesn't matter if they're disenrolled anywhere and where they go, would that take away resources? Like Elaine said, for our own kids, yes, we pay taxes, but if now we're opening it up to somebody, because Catholic school doesn't, homeschool doesn't offer anything, but Catholic school doesn't offer many, many things that we have. So, if we have a club that they don't have, can they come here and take their resources away from our kids that are here? Or if they don't make a football team there, can they come here and take a spot from a kid that does go here? I'm just curious to know how far out this goes beyond just homeschool. And I hope that there's discussion about this, release of this paper. I could understand both sides of it being a legal problem and having that confidentiality that somebody came forward, but if what they said is not, if it's true, then I, I mean, it shouldn't matter. There's laws out there to protect somebody for, you know, speaking the truth, obviously. But it, I think, having redacted statements, I know one of the issues had to do with medical problems, so if you take out the medical, it paints another picture. So, from a, from a resident and taxpayer standpoint, all of this money that it's costing us, we're paying for it. We should have the right to. We should have the right to know what happened. We've waited months and months and months. And there's been a long time where the public was asking, what happened to our superintendent? What happened? Why are we putting out all this money? And now if all these lawsuits come from all these other places, we're paying for it. I, we have a right to know what happened. I think to the point that Carol said, that if you redact it and it's the half of the story, to the point Dr. Hibbs said that, you know, this is, this is ruining his reputation and her reputation. I understand that is a personal effect. And it's wrong to their families, to their character. It's wrong. But it also affects our kids. The way people perceive our superintendent, whoever he was, just whoever was in that seat, the way that our staff, the public, our kids, the community, if they have this picture of this person who sits in such an important seat for our kids and it's wrong, that's wrong. And if you give a half-truth, it's going to paint another picture that also might not be true. And it's going to put more speculation and more suspicion and might cause more things that aren't the full truth. And I think all of us deserve the full truth as parents, as taxpayers, as community members that work with the school district. I mean, there's so much that was riding on this truth that everybody's waiting for it, waiting for it. And now you're taking away the opportunity for us to know it. You're giving us half-truths. I feel like half-truths are what got us here. Half-truths are what flowed around on social media. They're gossipy. They're, you have the actual answer in black and white. You can put an end to all of it. And if after that, people still don't accept the end result, then that's their problem. And they had a bigger problem than just the speculation in the first place. I think he deserves it. I think her daughter deserves it. I think the public deserves it. And I think all of you that sit here deserve it. And especially in November, that's a good clean start is to have the truth out there. However, this election goes, if Julie and Connie get reelected, that also affects their next term because now people are coming after them too. Is that fair to anybody to start a brand new board that way? I don't think it is. And I hope you guys rethink that.
Thank you. Joseph Bono?
One quick sec before Joseph comes up. I'm sorry, Joseph. I just want to make one more point and then I'm not going to probably say much more on this. I just want to point out, so when we're having a conversation about waiving privilege on a long report that I believe would clear my name, the conversation comes up where we have to have all these redactions, right? So something that would clear my name, there's redactions involved. In the resignation letter that names me specifically that I believe is entirely false, not one bit of conversation on, on, on redacting that. So what would clear me is, is literally redacted. And then what would again smear my name is not. There is a massive pattern here that everybody should recognize.
Yes. It's not even worth a rebuttal. Just go ahead. Let's talk about something that actually has to do with children and schools and stuff.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't.
It does, Steve. So when you make those comments and say, let's talk about kids, that's what I said earlier. This does affect kids. It does because it takes our time away. So if you're going to throw accusations out there, I'm going to defend myself. I didn't want to, but I'm forced to. What am I going to sit here and say, well, I don't want to talk about it. Let's talk about kids. I think this had an enormous effect on our productivity as a board. I said that a half hour ago.
We could talk about that after public comment. I just want to be respectful. So if you both can hold. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to get my full five minutes. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Residents. The simple truth that often gets overlooked every year is that every dollar that pays teacher salaries, every benefit, every program, every new hire comes from the taxpayers of this community, from us, the people who live and work in this town. Our school budget is overwhelmingly funded through local property taxes. If you don't know already, 56.6% of our property taxes account for our school budget every year. At the September 23rd School Board meeting, the Vice President of the WTA said, and I quote, "Ask you, Dr. Hibbs, to take ownership for the state that we are in, but we know you won't do that." Let me remind you, everyone has heard it here tonight. He was out on leave beginning of March 2025, got reinstated because of, because of a court decision back in August of 2025. That was $200,000 sitting at home, mind you. And the WTA, they have made it pretty clear who they are going to endorse this year, Ms. Baker and Ms. Kuzempel. And those exact people actually placed him on leave here, back in March. This year, our board approved a 7% increase in our school tax levy. That is roughly 15% if you look back the last four years now. Now, I'm not up here to defend Dr. Hibbs. I actually was pretty disappointed when he did get back reinstated. I wish he was a little bit more vocal. Tonight has been a great actually turnaround. I like when I hear public discourse because we don't have enough of that in this country. We need more public discourse. I like when you guys speak up. I like when you guys interact with each other. As a taxpayer, we're paying taxes for the school district. We want to hear more of that. And tonight is actually a great start. I really appreciate it. Now, no one is saying that teachers shouldn't be fairly compensated. They absolutely should. Our educators do vital work, but there has to be a balance. Ask yourselves, has your child, and this is for the people at home, ask your child, do you think they have gotten a good, a better education than you have when you got, when you were here? I mean, I was, I've pretty much been here my whole life. I moved here when I was in third grade and I still live here to this day. My kids are in the school district. I mean, I just, from my personal experience, from my kids telling me they're watching movies and music class, they're getting limited recess to maybe 13 minutes to eight minutes a day. And we're going to continue to the use of Chromebooks and iPads in elementary school. Why don't we just get rid of teachers and give them Chromebooks and iPads? That could save us a lot of money if we're going to continue to do that trend as a, as an education for our town. At the heart of this issue, people, because when property taxes climb year after year, families are going to start to leave. No one hesitates, no one's going to want to hesitate to move into the school district either. Businesses struggle to stay open. And when that happens, our community shrinks. I'm not going to go into COVID-era funding, but we did hire 50 people during COVID-era grants that we had received in town. And I'm not making these facts up. If you actually do and read our audits through our school district, you're going to find the same information out that I did. We've retained roughly 25 to 30 of those roles where they are still in our school district today. Our school attendance back in 2018 to 2019 was 72, 42 students, 7,242 students. We're now down to 7,032 students. Now, I know what you're alive, you're going to say, Joe, oh, that's a small percentage that we lost. We still lost those students. And then, and then in the real scheme of those things, that's going to be money that we're not going to be getting funded from the state either because our enrollment is going down. I thought the point of the public session was to have public discourse. Week after week, month after month, these residents come up here and ask questions. All I hear is, I can't answer that. I don't know. Half of you up here stay silent. Now, I don't know if you're answering questions after the fact or emailing the people. And if you are, I take back what I said. But if you're increasing our taxes year after year, you should answer every single one of these questions from anyone that comes up here tonight. You're dealing with taxpayers' money. That's what our community deserves, accountability and transparency. My personal career, I work in a finance and accounting position. Wherever I have worked, I've always treated the money of the money coming in and money going out as the owner's personal money. And in this case, it's a taxpayer's money. So tonight I asked the board, it's our money. It's the residents' money. It's the business owners' money in this town. And I'm just sick and tired of our taxes continuing to go up year after year. And we're actually not going to actually balance this budget. If we need to start treating the school district like a private sector, then we should. If you're working in the school district and you feel like the grass is greener on the other side, give it a go. But as a private sector employee like myself, it's not always that way. If you're working in the school district, don't forget at the end of the day, who is paying your salary and your benefits. It's the taxpayer. So please remember who to vote for. It's important if you want your taxes not to go up next year.
Thank you. Anne Marguglio?
Good evening. My name is Anne Marguglio. I spent 27 years as an employee of the district and I've since retired from my position as Assistant High School Data Coordinator. I loved my work serving students. The integrity of student records, including grades, is a core issue for the district and one of which I was a steward and was proud of the accuracy of these grades. If student grades were changed improperly and colleges were to become aware that student grades were being changed without academic justification, they may look at student transcripts from Washington Township with more skepticism. The admissions office at a small college in Vermont may not know anything about such a theoretical change, but you can be sure that the staff at Rowan and Rutgers would be aware if such a thing were to occur. Would it affect how they view the content of the student paperwork from Washington Township High School? When everything else is equal, would a potential college select a student from a school without questions about academic integrity over one from Washington Township? An associated issue with changing grades is the impact of any potential changes to other students. Specifically, would or has another student been harmed by the changes to grades in such a way? Would the community be outraged if any type of unethical change of grades were to affect their student's admission, potential or financial aid when they applied to a college? The outrage starts with one student or family who could demonstrate the harm and be willing to fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Tarashi?
One sec before Mr. Tarashi. Just, just to be clear, there was absolutely nothing wrong with what occurred in our district. Nothing. Absolutely nothing. No evidence. I will not go deeper into the board members' specifics, but what happened is exactly what should have happened here.
Prior to beginning, I'd like to congratulate our new student representative. I had the pleasure of having this wonderful young lady in class, and she is very much worthy of the position. And I, I'm very proud of you for that. You're welcome. I'd also like to briefly ask Ms. Clancy, since you brought up the ripple effect, if you heard Ms. Marguglio's comments regarding the effect that changing a grade might have on other students. That's a ripple effect. That ripple effect can drastically affect the ranking, the potential eligibility for a student to receive a STAR scholarship or any other kind of scholarship because it affects the ranking. Just to be clear. Members of the board, I've done my best to redact most of the names contained in my letter to all of you. I'm going to probably need at least two five-minute periods to get through this, unless you do in fact extend my time since my name has been invoked several times earlier. I am writing as the WTA president to express my concern regarding the recent Philadelphia Inquirer article dated October 6, 2025, which portrays our superintendent as having been cleared following the district's internal investigation. As someone familiar with the evidence, testimony, and firsthand accounts presented to me during this process, I find this characterization both misleading and troubling. Please understand that you, the board, choose to accept or reject any recommendation from a one-time attorney whom I imagine you may never have even met. The article's framing does not reflect the full scope of the findings or the concerns raised throughout the investigation. I wonder if the legal conclusion may have avoided a finding of misconduct due to its narrow definition. The documentation and statements provided to the investigator include substantial evidence of ethical violations, professional lapses, and failures of judgment inconsistent with the standards outlined in at least Board Policies 1230 and 1210. 1230 is the superintendent's duties. 1210 refers to the board superintendent revisions. I will not go into great length in regard to both policies since you can have access to them at your convenience. Witnesses were offered the opportunity to plainly answer questions by the conflict attorney or answer them under oath. I imagine most would be forthcoming and answer under oath as I did. Did our superintendent? I would assume hopefully that he did, but I cannot attest to the fact that he did. Please grant that significant weight if he did not, regardless of any reason that he might have given. Why would our educational leader not swear to the truth when it comes to his academic integrity? Why would we accept that? A court reporter was present at those testimonies where those records included with the investigation. These would confirm the important precise details I am highlighting here. There were actually two completely different grade changes. The first grade change was by the teacher to exempt three individual assignments according to necessary accommodations and at the request of the parent. The second grade change followed the first after it was seemingly not high enough. It was an overall grade change for the course, picked out of the sky, done covertly, and then threatened by the assistant superintendent to the teacher and threatened by the superintendent to the supervisor of that department. The superintendent was aware of that grade change. The overall grade change has no merit or pedagogical basis or link.
Mr. Tarash, your five minutes is up.
Thank you. I'll be back.
Can I have a motion?
I just want to caution everybody about saying things that, oh, I just want to caution everybody in this room about saying things that may or may not be defamatory. So we're just being very careful about.
Excellent advice. If you couldn't hear it, she actually cautioned everyone to make sure you don't defame people. So let me just say a few things. A, no evidence of misconduct. It doesn't say that there's 19 definitions, Mr. Tarashi, of the word misconduct. No evidence of misconduct. It was a good try. It was a good try. Didn't work. So you mentioned details. Did you have any? Did you have any details that you submitted with the ethical complaint?
Back and forth?
You didn't. It's a really rhetorical question because I don't need an answer because the answer is no. There were no details.
We'll wait until round two.
You know, we're not going to go back and forth. You can wait until round 12.
Eric, did you swear? No, tell me if you swear.
Listen, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't need you to tell me what to do, Ms. Kuzempel. So.
Hold on, hold on. It wasn't just Julie. It was.
She just told me what she wanted me to do and I.
No, I'm.
She was.
It was Janine.
I don't, don't yell at me.
I just asked you to answer the question.
It was, it was Julie and Janine that cautioned you. It wasn't just Julie.
That's not a caution, Mr. Trano. What, what Ms. Kuzempel said was just tell them if, whether or not you went under oath or not. That was what was said. Too often here, too, too often here, we, we don't, we don't use the right words and we actually try to deflect. So whether or not I went under oath or not is immaterial. I'll tell you the answer and I'll tell you the why. And the reality is I did not go under oath. And I'll tell you exactly why I did not go under oath because on the advice of my attorney, I took it. But let's just stop for a second. If we're placing so much more weight on people that didn't go under oath, let me go back and, and say it again. No evidence of misconduct. So we're going to have to wait now for the, the, the huge document to come out and try and decipher who was, who was what. But I'm going to take an educated guess that in those, I don't know how many pages it seemed, hundreds, that there's probably zero evidence in there at all. So you mentioned details. There were no details.
So when we're done public, I'm not going to keep sitting here and not saying anything because I think I'm, I should be able to comment.
We're still open, Buck. We're still open, Baca.
Okay, so I'm just going to comment and say this. I'm going to do a spoiler alert. My daughter had a concussion. There were zeros put in, which goes against our policy. All of the zeros were not removed. So that's why there was a second grade change. I am unaware of anything that would be wrong. I honestly, I don't care, I'll speak very freely. I sent an email and said that she had a concussion. Period, end of story. It was the end of the year. I don't know, my kid never had a concussion. I'm like, could this be a big deal? I don't know, she never had one, none of my kids did. It was a big deal. So I sent medical documentation. She had a concussion. There were zeros put in, not by all teachers, but by some, that were not removed. And I, having no idea of our policy and protocol, simply said, during the summer, should- At what point does she make up all of the quizzes and tests? I'm not familiar. Do I have to get a tutor? I have no idea. At that point, I was told by someone who used to tutor here, ask for her grades, ask for that to be exempt. It should not hurt her grade, it should not help her grade. It should just be a neutral point in time. That is exactly what happened. And if you follow the grades, and that's why I'm upset about things being redacted, because if you saw the full picture, you would see that the grade she ended up with is exactly where she would have been if she didn't have a concussion. There was no gain. I'll also comment and say, she received no academic scholarships. So yes, it is misleading and troubling, because she didn't really benefit at all from any of it. Period. And if you looked at her transcript, you'd say, that makes sense, which is why I don't want anything redacted. I never brought this up to the superintendent, because I don't know why I would. I'm talking about being a parent. I don't forfeit my rights as a parent if my kid has a concussion, and I communicate that. I don't forfeit my rights as a parent when I'm a board member. But to cross that line and make the superintendent aware that my kid has a concussion? That's weird. I wouldn't do that. There'd be no reason for me to say, hey, my kid has a concussion. I think that's a weird conversation. And I did not have that conversation. I simply inquired, and then when the grade was not updated, not changed, updated, to what it should have been, to remove the zeros, because she had a concussion. I inquired and said, okay, I can't access Power School. If she missed all these tests and quizzes and all of the homeworks, for it to go up a nominal amount, doesn't make sense to me. And I can't go back and look at it. There was no way for me to look at it. So I asked the question and said, can you check this? Because I don't want to badger the teacher either. And if my emails, I hope they're not all redacted, I thought I had a great relationship. Well, unbeknownst to me, I didn't. I probably wouldn't have been like- I was very nice in the emails. In fact, very complimentary of the teacher. I had no idea that all of this behind the scenes was happening. No idea. And by the way, I'm also going to comment, this isn't connected with National Honor Society. Has no connection at all. So I just went, I'm not staring at you, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of staring off.
Carol, can you explain that?
So she sustained a concussion at the end of her junior year. She wasn't cleared from the concussion, actually, until November of her senior year. October, November. National Honor Society happens junior year. That's where, that's a whole separate subject. This is not connected with that.
Based upon your first four semesters, by the way.
It just has no bearing. National Honor Society is freshman and sophomore year, four semesters. This grade update because of a concussion has nothing to do with it at all. There is no connection. She didn't receive a scholarship and a ranking and all that. She did not. Carol. So I'm just saying it for the record, because I think it's important for everyone to know, and then I get cut off when I'm speaking the truth and saying this is what happened.
Well, it's not that, it's just that our daughters, they graduated the same year. My daughter just turned 20. And I, I know you're defending your daughter, but-
I'm just speaking the truth.
She's an adult, and I just, you know, I don't know, without her being here. It's a lot of discussion.
I'm good to be the mom here. I'm good.
The other thing I wanted to say is, in the emails that you sent us, I don't know, am I allowed to talk about the emails that you sent us? In your ethics response?
I don't know what emails you're referencing, but it's all on the board. Anything I would send would be truthful.
In those emails, you do say to the teachers, my daughter doesn't know I'm asking you to do this. She doesn't want me to do this. And so-
Yes, because I-
I feel bad that this has all happened when the poor kid didn't even want it.
Because the poor kid, no one cares about my kid. So what happened is that, if you're talking about National Honor Society, that's a separate subject, that she was absolutely-
Like, I mean, I have a child in class of 2024, too. I've never once-
So what is called about your child, though?
But you are, because if you're doing-
There is no evidence of a grade change. Stop.
We got to shut this down.
It's a grade update.
I don't even know why we're talking about it.
We're talking about it because Julie, someone came up to the podium and is talking about it. So I'm going to clear the record. Everyone can be upset.
All right, just keep talking.
I didn't, listen, I didn't create any of this, but I'm not going to sit back silently.
What she's saying, that's all I'm saying.
It's not making me look worse.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for five minutes.
There's a motion to-
And also, I was under oath. I just want to clear that up.
There is a motion to go into executive session. Steve just made a motion.
We got to check, this is ridiculous.
Wait, I'm sorry, did you just tell them to be quiet? Oh, okay, because Ron Magarini routinely screams at me, and nothing is said to him. I just want to make that point.
Okay, no, I'm just, I want to make sure everyone's dealt with the same way.
Do I have a second?
Sorry, Chris.
I'll second it for you.
All right, roll call, discussion, can we do a roll call? We need to cool off. We just, we have to cool off. This is starting to get unprofessional, starting to get out of hand. Everybody wants to have their points, make your points, but-
Actually, we just want to get off.
Yeah, but this is starting to look ridiculous, and this is why this is a circus. This is why this is reality television. So motion, please, can someone vote? All of you vote, I don't care how you vote. Motion to go into executive for five minutes. To cool down.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm a now.
So can we just do a- Oh, do a roll call? Okay. I just want to get through the agenda, and it's like, oh, this is going to get- We're just talking about our hand, and it's inappropriate.
Mr. Ross? Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy? Mrs. Chilla?
No.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy, would you like to go into executive session, yes or no?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Passed.
Okay, so where are we going to go?
His office or somewhere we can air this out.
Let the- Do you want to go to that conference room? I don't know if you want.
Take a walk.
So moved.
You have enough? Okay.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to committee discussions, instructional affairs. Can we please have a report, Mrs. Bloom?
Oh, yes. I have the instructional affairs minutes, and I just want to say that when we meet in instructional affairs, we always have very good meetings and a lot of cooperation. So I thank our committee and our committee members for what we do in instructional affairs. At this past meeting, I was there, Mrs. Clancy was there, Mr. Distillio, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Gramaldi, Mrs. Hartong, Mrs. Miller, and Dr. Hibbs. Mrs. Gueranger, who is a supervisor, gave a presentation of the new K through five E L A curriculum called Core Knowledge of Language Arts. Board members had the opportunity to review the materials that we will be using. Mrs. Clancy took some of the materials home.
I also took some of the materials home to look at.
And the funny thing was, was that a few days later, I was at my daughter's house, and my granddaughter, who's in first grade at Bell's, brought out this book that she had made about the skeleton and the body. And sure enough, Mrs. Gerber, it was right from the new reading series, and she was very proud to show it to me and go through the booklet with me. Mrs. Gueranger also discussed the use of DIBELS testing to benchmark students' progress. We talked about field trips, and Mrs. Gerber removed four destinations that are no longer in use. A lot of the other ones apparently have changed names and things like that, or we may not have used them now, but we may have in the past, so they're still on the list. We had discussion about a National Social Studies Honor Society. It was actually approved in 2015, but it was never acted on. So at this point, there's interest in it, so the district will be looking for community sponsors for that organization. We also talked about habits of work. We discussed that as far as grading goes. It's actually a progress report that's starting for grades six through eighth. It's evaluated quarterly, and it gives you a little bit more information than just getting the report card or the semester grade. It will be used to evaluate engagement with learning, preparation for learning, interactions with peers and teachers. This is, as I said, graded separately from academics, and it's meant to look at the whole child and understand the whole child when you're thinking of how they're learning. Mrs. Gerber let us know that we were going to have a lot of audits in the district this year. I wrote them all down, but there's so many. One would be IDEA, Title III, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. So we do have a lot of that going on. We also went over, as Dr. Hibbs talked about, the homeschooling and equivalent education outside of the schools, which had to do with whether or not we would have students who are homeschooled be able to participate. And according to that, we're going to go into policy and go over that. The committee discussed testing, including NJQFAC, DIBELS, preliminary SATs, which will be taking place on October 30th. Let's see. We talked about cellphone use discussion and the possibility of a standalone cellphone policy or regulation for cellphone protocol. Ms. Gramaldi shared that there will be a parent webinar on the FACA forum on October 20th. Title I parents' meetings will be held virtually. There was one for secondary on October 8th. There will be one for elementary on October 16th. We talked about the six-period stipends and discussed the fact that we're using those stipends because we're having trouble getting hires and having them approved in time to help with classes. Last week, we talked about Policy 2280, which we discussed that policy, and it's going to be changed a little bit. What it has to do with is the Board of Education members will be able to go up and give their diploma to a graduating child or grandchild. And our next meeting is on November 10th, and as I said, we always have a very, very good meeting. So I thank all the participants and our supervisors over there for giving us the information that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bloom. Mr. Sorano, business committee?
Thank you, Madam President. So we had business committee on October 7th at 6:00 P.M. The board members in attendance were myself and Mr. Ross. Mr. La Liberty was away on business, I believe, and Julie could not make the meeting. She was tied up with some business obligations as well, so it was just us two. The administrators in attendance were Mrs. Wector and Dr. Hibbs. The first item of business we covered was the naming rights, RFP. So there were some small tweaks made to that RFP to try to incentivize smaller businesses. I think previously, there's always been banks that have been interested in that. Hopefully, with the changes that we plan on making, it can incentivize some medium-sized businesses. It's a lot of money for a small business, but for a medium-sized business, it may be feasible with the changes that we plan on making. The solar project update, we're still waiting approvals for the interconnection applications from Atlantic City Electric. We're planning a meeting on 10/28 to set the final scope of the projects, and we plan on breaking these out. Dr. Hibbs, correct me if I'm wrong, in phases?
Yes.
Correct?
Two.
Okay. All right. Two phases. And then, next item of business was the budget planning items. So their admin has been having meetings to plan for the 25-26 shortfalls, and they've been having meetings to review the 26-27 staffing and projections related to contractual increases. My apologies. Our next item of business was the budget calendar. So the calendar was reviewed, reminder of the budget address, and discussed adding additional committee meetings and a retreat. The governor's budget address could be March 10th instead of 2/24. So with this, I'm going to summarize these sets of notes. So Janine, correct me if I'm wrong here. You were just telling us that the goalposts can move with regard to approvals from the state depending on the budget address and where they're allocating money. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to summarize those notes by saying that. Upcoming purchasing items, we have no bids currently or RFPs that will be generated and sent out to qualified bidders. We did go over the Q-SAC scores, but I believe Mrs. Bloom went over that in her outline. I'm going through the agenda. Give me one second. Next item of business, we discussed, and I don't know where this originated from, but the pilot agreements. So there was conversation between the administration and the mayor, as well as myself and the mayor, and he said that this was not true. He had only, excuse me, sorry. He had only engaged in pilot agreements for two separate warehousing projects, and there was no intention, there is currently no intention of town council to enter into a pilot agreement that would be detrimental to the school district. So I don't know where that originated from, but I wanted to make that clear. There's no intention of entering into a pilot agreement other than the two we've already entered into as a township. Selling central administration, so utility bills. I asked in a previous meeting what those utility bills were for central admin and how much money we'd possibly be saving if we sold the building, plus the proceeds. So proceeds plus the hidden costs that we'd be saving and bills that we wouldn't have to pay. The electric on any given month, I'm sorry, this was for the year, right? Okay. So electric for the year, my apologies. Thirty thousand dollars on average. The gas, eleven thousand dollars. Phone, eleven thousand dollars. Water and sewer, close to thirty-five hundred. So that's some of the money we would be saving along with the proceeds. So that is, I believe that those numbers are worth noting in the discussions to sell central admin. And that concluded the meeting. So I appreciate it, and thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, question on the selling of central admin. I think it's good that we have that data so we could see what the potential savings would be. I think just consideration of the additional units that are going to be coming in to the district, you know, we are anticipating, I think, 6,000 more units coming into the district over the next year, few years here, so the enrollments typically will go up with that. So space could become a premium, and if we were to relocate this to, say, a different building, I would just say, look at the cost of the temporary unit that we put on at Hurfield, right? That was about 1.6 million, just for that little addition of those few classrooms there. So, you know, we don't want to be penny wise or pound foolish, right? Like, we save a little bit here now, we won't have to build additions on the classrooms and things like that that could be very costly. So I think, you know, I saw on that, you're going to inquire with a realtor about potentially how much this building would get us. I think also finding out what potentially a lease could be for that, because that could get us five years or so until the units come in, and then we're going to need the space back. So that could be another consideration to look at.
Okay. Moving on to the report of the superintendent, I have motion to approve items one through four. They were canceled.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Kazempel?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you to everyone who had us pass CUSAC. Appreciate it. Under student activities and communications, have a motion to approve items one and two.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Kazempel?
Yes. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve items one through 20 under human resources?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Chilla?
Roll call. I'm sorry. Sorry, I just wanted to call out a retirement if no one's going to. Just want to make sure that you acknowledge it. Just to congratulate, I may not say this properly, Jeanette Golazewski's letter of retirement as Secretary Two from Hurfield. She worked for the district for approximately 21 years, so just want to congratulate her on her retirement.
Ms. Chilla?
Oh, yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Kazempel?
Yes. Motion carries. Have a motion to approve items one through three under finance and facilities.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes to one and two, noted number three.
Ms. Kazempel?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Any items of new business from board members?
I have a few. Just a follow-up from our retreat. I don't know where we are, and I know it's been a busy week, but there was the advice to form a policy committee. I don't know, Julie, if you've given any consideration to that, but that was a big takeaway from the retreat. So I don't know if you've given consideration to forming a policy committee or not, but I just want to at least put it out for, not everyone was able to attend, so I just wanted to make sure that we talked about it as a board, to form a policy committee. That's number one. Number two, we have policy 0167. I think that we should amend it to remove the item that says first public participation relates only to items on the board's official agenda. We literally, pretty much every meeting, do not follow that. So I think that we should just remove it, and then that way, the public has two opportunities to come up and speak about whatever they wish, but I think we just have to make a decision on whether, are we going to follow that? First public participation relates only to the official agenda, or are we not? And I know sometimes it's difficult when someone gets up, you don't know what they're going to talk about until they're up there.
Well, I'm not allowed to stop them, so it's not us, that's not.
I think we should just amend it to say, talk about whatever you want, because we do that anyway, which I'm totally fine with, so I want to put that out there for consideration.
I think to go along with that, I think we used to have them say their name and where they live, their address. I don't care where they live, but just the fact that I think that that helps too, because sometimes I'm not really sure who's up there speaking.
So I'll let everyone else talk, but I can make an official motion about amending the policy to strike that.
Are there any other amendments to that policy while we're in it again? The public comment policy?
So in the previous meeting, there was a discussion, and you made the statement that in most other school districts in New Jersey, they have three minutes and not five. So is there any board members who would be amenable to reducing the time?
I think we need to go into a policy discussion if we're going to do that, plus change it or change it from the agenda items only, which we did about a year ago with that, and it really didn't work. We never enforced it. So maybe we just need to look at that whole area again and revisit it. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Okay.
Yeah. I know we debated the time several times, about going on to three, five, split the difference to four, and then just like, fine, keep it at five, but I'd be open to discussing it in policy committee, maybe seeing what other districts do, and we could do a survey.
Who is?
Because the problem, I think, is where the meeting's where you're here at 2:00 in the morning. You know, and some people don't get to make their comment, because it gets so late, they leave.
Yeah. Who would be interested in being on the policy committee?
I would.
Pat, Elaine? Ralph? And anyone else? I mean, I can go on it. Okay. Were you finished?
Yep. I just wanted to, and I won't make a motion tonight if we're going to have a policy committee, just if I could ask that, I don't know who you're going to make the chair, if I could just ask that, the first, one of the tasks of the policy committee is that we revisit our participation. So I won't make the motion tonight. That way, it could properly go into policy. I'm totally fine with that.
Okay. One of the items that I had was just to report out on the retreat in general, that was one of the things that came out of it, and also, we settled on goals, which we are getting from New Jersey School Boards to workshop action items for. So we'll be talking more about that on the 28th, when we receive that action form, planning form. Any other items of new business?
Yeah, I have something.
Go ahead.
So, Dr. La, I just wanted to thank you for the jungle gym repair at Wedgwood. I appreciate it. Is there any way we can have an inspection done of all of them, just to make sure any other ones in the middle, or I'm sorry, just the elementary schools, any jungle gyms we have in the district don't have the same issues?
Yeah, I don't think any of the other jungle gyms have any, or the playgrounds have any of those issues. That was where the plastic hardcover had worn away to expose metal, so massive shout-out to our maintenance crew, who literally, they sanded it down, they re-rinode it, they sprayed it, it looks brand-new. And as you know, playgrounds can cost upwards of $100,000, so this really brought that back to life. But yeah, I'll make sure nothing else looks like that, and if it does, we'll do the exact same thing. We've already had that conversation. Yeah, but thank you very much, and thank you for being a good supporter of that. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
One more thing, I'm sorry. Prior to the meeting, I had a lot of questions on legal bills. I don't want to go into a second executive tonight. I don't think anyone is going to be, wants to do that. So if I could just, Julie, have your support that maybe they can be answered through email instead of a second executive.
So I spoke to Ari about that, and he said that we would need to agree as a board to instruct me to do that, because it would cost a lot of money for him to work on this project, and.
Yeah, and the only thing I challenge, Julie, is that the work was already done. I'm just asking for a summary. I don't think, that's what I, and again, I don't want to speak about it, because it might be more attorney-client privilege. If you want to just have some email clarifications, I didn't get a chance, because I didn't finish work until 5:30 today, so I couldn't email back, but if we could just have an email to clarify, and then maybe we could put it on for next week to talk about it, but I don't want to ask the board to go into a second executive about this.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay. Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Raymond Was.
Raymond Was, Washington Township. So I know I mentioned on my card, so thank you for the responses related to the IDEA. That was very important and invaluable information to have, and thank you guys for willing to send out information, letters and things like that to support it, and make sure we still have things in place, but also, we should try to, because before you know it, it could happen anytime or whenever, the timeline of this, like, it could be within the next six months, even less, it all depends, or within a year or two. You should still have some type of action plan for this to ever happen, how we spend our resources, but how we proactively advocate and bring justice to our students, to make sure they're able to have those accommodations still and not have violations still be happening to our students, because this does affect our education as a whole and moving forward. So that is a priority for me, to see happen and have some type of plan, so we're not just falling behind and just scrambling when we have nothing to fall back on, or to see what we can do. So I understand, we do have funds now, I'm just talking about, like, in the school and how functions are and not violating certain things, and we still keep it up to date and staying in protocol for those things, because this legislation that we're talking about has been around since 50 years. 50 years. It's been absolutely crazy. And someone who actually started it and helped and developed these things and stuff like that that have rights for them was someone that actually received an honorary degree at Rowan University. Her name is Dr. Judy Hume, and she put in a lot of work to get this stuff done, and she's not even acknowledged a whole lot in textbooks or in history or anything else, and that is a critical issue. And just seeing those formalities happen and seeing things like this not be taken seriously and knowing rights are being, not taken away, but just in education, in civil rights and so much more, are really affecting our students. Not currently, but it will. It will for sure happen, not soon. If it doesn't happen soon, it will happen later. It will come down to the line for it, but also, my first point that I addressed with the professionalism of the board, I appreciate all the work that you guys do. I know you guys volunteer and everything else, but the way that happened the last, like, several minutes before executive and stuff, that was a lot, and to reel it in, I know it might not be good within Robert's rules and everything else, and several boards that I started on in student government and things like that, they had a gavel. So I don't know if it was worth the investment of getting a gavel, but it's just some thoughts I was thinking, but that's just a thought process, and that's just my thought, but that's pretty much it.
Hold the gavel.
As we continue with public comment, I just want to remind everybody about professional statements and defamatory statements, and I just want to make sure that everybody is very clear that if defamatory statements are made, action can be taken against you. Thank you.
Ari Tarashi.
If I may, I'd like to pick up somewhat where I left off. The suspicions that were all presented to me as the WTEA president were presented to me, and it was my obligation, as such.
Mr. Tarashi, can you, just one second, can we just pause his time for a second? We just realized that we never did actually come back from the executive session that we just had.
Oh, okay.
I motioned to close to the public, but I didn't motion to close executive, so can I have a motion to close executive retroactive?
Motion to close?
Motion. Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. Go ahead. Five minutes on the clock. Go ahead.
The suspicions that were presented to me as president of the WTEA, it was my obligation, as such, to file the concerns that were presented to me to the appropriate authorities and commission. That was essentially my role. It is also important to note that contractually, WTEA contract with the school district, any and all grade changes, whether they be singular or multiple, are to be discussed with the teacher involved, and if in fact, the teacher does not agree with the grade change, whatever administrator has authorized that change, has to affix their name on that grade change on the permanent record, just as a point of reference there. I, along with many others, have talked at great length of the decline that has befallen this district, only to hear that not one member of this leadership, presently at least, is accepting accountability for its decline. Yes, it's easy to place blame on the Board of Education, because that is one of their functions, but please keep in mind that which we have heard repeatedly, members of this board have not been informed of many of the issues that exist within this district. Why not? So in an effort to remind all of you of the past, and those who helped to make this district the once premier district in Gloucester County, allow me to cite just a few. I refer to this as, where have all the good people gone? Perhaps more importantly, why have they gone? Our former business administrator, Peg Meehan. Our former assistant business administrator, Harry Finkel. Former power school coordinator, Charlie Dowd. Former school data specialist, Ann Marguglio. Former head of the math department, Carol English. Former head of security, Bill Krutzmacher. Former head of maintenance, Bill Schellenfeldt. Former director of assessment and data, Catherine Carey. Former assistant superintendent, Steve Gregor. Former director of special education, Christina Badiato. Former director of IT, Joe Konecki. God rest his soul. I apologize if I left anyone out. I wonder why they all have left us. Add to that list the members of the teaching staff, the support staff, the aides that have left, and ironically enough, when you look at it, is it due to the members of this board who have repeatedly said that they weren't made aware of much that was happening? Why would that be held from them? Or perhaps, there's other reasons why these people have left. When it's all said and done, we have to recognize that, just for the record, I didn't cause this. I reacted to it, but the real individuals who created this mess are not out here in the audience, and they're not watching on TV or listening. And finally, Mr. Superintendent, I am glad that you finally admitted that during your deposition, you were not deposed under oath. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Bono?
Joe Bono, Washington Township. I just wanted to bring up the homeschool-
I just wanted to bring up the homeschooling thing you guys talked about earlier. I think that if you're a taxpayer in this town, like I said in my last public session, or my, the first public meeting, I think they have the right to, if they want to be involved in a club or a sport, as a taxpayer, as a parent of that child, I think they have the right to be in that club or sport. You guys are making decisions for people that are affecting people's livelihoods. They should have the right to be able to be in those positions. I really didn't want to bring this up, but it was such a spectacle the last time around. I really think you guys should release this letter, or whatever the depositions are, before the election, so everyone has a clear mind when they go to vote this November. I don't know if that's possible, but just, again, our taxes are probably going to go up next year, guys. Just, just the trend of how the board's going, our taxes are going to be probably going up next year. And if we really want to vote on people that are going to hopefully fix the problem, we should all have the facts. That's just how I feel. The reducing the time, no. Again, like I said the last time around, no. We have the right to come up here and talk, and have free discourse with you guys. By reducing time, then give me back, give me back my 7%. You know, that's just how I feel, I'm sorry. And then Mr. Tarashi, where do they go? They have the right to leave, everyone has the right. In a private sector job, if you don't like your current position, you have the right to leave to go to another company. I'm sorry that, that, you know, that this is not how it works all the time, but. And you just don't want to bring up the fact that it really probably comes down to money. And don't get me wrong, everyone deserves to make a certain amount of money, there's a market out there for everybody. But, you know, if you want to bring this up, just tell the truth. You're not, you want them to tell the truth, you should have to tell the truth as well. I mean, where they're going, probably going for more money, better benefits. Hey, good for them. Grass isn't always greener, like I said before. I've been in that position myself, my own professional career. But, you know, you know, that's just how I feel. So I hope you guys take a little bit of what I said tonight, especially to homeschooling. Not even just homeschooling, even people that might have their kids in a Christian school in town as well. I really think you guys should look at all odds of that. Again, it's taxpayer money at the end of the day, thanks.
Thank you, James Misati?
Good evening, James Misati, Washington Township. Ms. Kuzempel, you mentioned that you're going to have the board goals for the next meeting. Would it be possible to also get the board self-evaluation? That was handed out at the meeting last week, but it wasn't in any of the documentation or presented. Like, it was just handed out to you guys, I'd really be interested to kind of see what that was, because Dr. Bandlow had a lot of really great feedback in terms of what that looked like. And you guys were very critical of yourselves, apparently, in that, that's kind of fed into the goals. So I think that would be very interesting to kind of see the dynamic of that. So I don't know if that's able to be included in the packet for the next meeting, so that we can see what that is. But that'd be great, other than having to over-request it, so make it a lot easier. So there's that, but also one that I just touched on tonight. This is a very heated, emotional conversation, and it's needed to happen for months. As a member of the public, I think this is one of the best meetings that could have happened for the team that's sitting up there right now. That's, I came up to this board months ago and talked about reading the five dysfunctions of a team, and needing to get to trust. And it starts with the fact that you guys were not able, and I understand it's due to some of the lawsuits, and you weren't able to talk about things with each other or publicly. So like, you were forced into a position of not being able to talk about that, and that led to a lot of the difficulty that I think you guys experienced, and then as a result, the district and the community experienced. So I understand that it got heated, and Mr. Serrano, fully respect you feeling like you needed to go into the executive session for that. But I think that was really good for everybody. I think it's a good starting point. But I think one of the things that, from my perspective, I am really still looking for, and I talk about books a lot when I come up here, is the book Leaders Eat Last by Simon Sinek. And one of the things that it talked about, that that book talks about is, you know, as a leader, stepping into a position where, you know, you're putting others before yourself. And one of the things that, as a community member, I've experienced is the fact that very few people seem to want to be the first person to say, I'm sorry. Nobody wants to be the first person to say, I was wrong. And nobody wants to be the first person to extend their hand to somebody else that's on the other side to say, how can we put the past behind us and actually start to move forward? And so I want to encourage the board, you know, with five meetings left, or whatever it is for some that are going to be rolling off, to view tonight and take this as an opportunity as the starting point for being able to rebuild the trust that you all need to have with each other. Because if you can't have that, if you can't find common ground to work together, it's going to be very different, difficult for everybody else to do that. And so that's not just amongst yourselves, that's, again, with the administration, with the board, with the unions, with everybody about, in the community. You know, the comments on the Facebook are already going, right? All we're doing right now is trying to put out a fire with gasoline. It's not a good way to do it, it's just going to make it worse, right? So until we can start, you know, finding the way to get to that more positive place, I think we're going to continue to have struggles. But tonight was a really great first step, and I think you all need to figure out taking advantage of it. That's just my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Sean Lindsay?
Good evening, Sean Lindsay, Washington Township. I'm going to start off by saying, you know, I, Dr. Hibs, I'm sorry that you've had to go through this for the past five months. I think that you've done as best as you can with this board that you have. I truly believe that there's a lot more great that you can do, but you don't have the support of the board. You just flat-out don't. We just saw tonight, it was another four-to-three vote, four-to-three vote. There's no continuity. There's no gathering of everybody together and say, hey, why can't we just agree wholeheartedly on this one item? It's always a four-to-three or a five-to-four vote. That's how it's been since January, I'm sorry to say it, that's what it is. I keep saying it, the board is divided. Challenge me, I dare anyone to tell me otherwise, it is divided. Tonight, I agree with Mr. Misati, I did see a little bit of emotion tonight, it was finally nice to see it, compared to just standing there stoic like a bunch of garden gnomes waiting for somebody to say something. It was nice to actually see, hear some responses. And even Mr. Serrano, I'll commend you. We haven't always seen eye-to-eye, but I commend you for taking control of the situation to go into executive. I really think that was a big step. The board was getting a little crazy, so you took, I think you took the initiative. So I'll give you, I'll give you props on that, did a good job on it, I will give you that. What else do we got here? I'd like, there is, there are a couple of questions I'd like to ask, if they can get answered, great, if they can't, big surprise. Why did Dr. Hibs have to be put out on leave to do an investigation into an ethics complaint? That's one question, please. Who determined the length of time of five months to put him on leave? As far as when we didn't have an acting superintendent, albeit Ms. Miller, Ms. Gerber, thank you again for your service. We didn't have the money to pay for a second superintendent, so why in the world were we trying to bring a second one in? While we had one that was paid to stay at home? Anybody can answer that for me, I'd appreciate that, too. And also, the last thing I'll say, I said it last time, and I'm going to say it again. I hear people saying that they can't hear anything, well, if you stop talking when other people are talking, and show them the respect that they deserve, just like right now, I just heard it. Show us the respect that we deserve. We come up to this podium, it's not easy to talk in public. I get nervous, I don't like talking in public, I really don't. But when things like this happen, I need to speak up, because now I'm frustrated, because again, it seems like the board took more power than what they really actually have over the past five months. And I want people to understand something, the board doesn't have as much power as you think we do. If you understood what our actual goals are, and you can find it on the website, we don't have this overwhelming power to do things that people think we do. And I encourage anybody that wants to, look, you don't like me, fine, you don't like them, fine, run for the board. Show us up, prove us wrong. Instead of sitting there chirping away when I'm trying to listen to Mr. La Liberty speak, or Ms. Kuzempel speak, or Ms. Bloom speak, or Ms. Chilla speak. When I hear this in the background, when I'm sitting here trying to listen to what is potentially important, I can't, because I'm hearing. You can't hear anything. So you want to talk about respect? Start by showing these guys the respect, start showing the people at the podium respect. And maybe, just maybe, we might make this district better. Instead of what we've got right now with the infighting and the arguments, just, can we, can we stop? Can we go back to being full-grown, mature adults? That's all, thank you.
Heather Whitcraft?
Heather Whitcraft, I just wanted to remind everybody, next Wednesday, the 22nd, 5:30 to 8:30 at Senior Citizen Center on Green Tree Road. Huh? Oh, I thought somebody said something. Let's meet the candidates, there will be six of the eight. Mr. Morado's not in, he dropped out, but, and Mr. Lindsay won't be there, but the other six candidates will be there. So I hope everybody comes, thanks.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close to the public?
Because I forgot something. I want to thank Chrissy and the support staff for the stuff the bus. And hopefully, they really stuffed the bus, thank you for coming out and doing that.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.